Okay, and we'll go ahead and gabble the meeting to order. Tonight is Wednesday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-four, five thirty. It's our regular scheduled meeting here at City Hall. Heather, would you call the roll, please?
Mound.
Here.
Cerny.
Here.
Reichert.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Kimnitz.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Okay, up next, we have Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Amy to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, up next, adopt the agenda. Uh, are there any additions? If there's no additions or corrections to the agenda, I would look for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Cerny.
Yes.
Reichert.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kimnitz.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Mound.
Yes.
Up next, approve minutes of the August fourth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. In your packet, if there's no additions or corrections, I would look for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Reichert.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kimnitz.
Yes.
Carlson. Mound.
Yes.
Cerny.
Yes.
Um, unfinished business. Looks like there is no unfinished business. I'll take us into new business with the Police Department, and up first is Jeff Jensen. Discussion on radio issues.
Good afternoon, I guess, still, counsel. Um, this, I'm, I gotta fill in a little bit of backstory before I get to the point. Um, I guess roughly two and a half, three years ago, we started knowing some degradation of the ability for us to use the public servant, uh, radio system that the state has. Uh, I, I turned in a work order with the Bureau of Information Technology. They sent a tech up. They said that it was more than likely that our code plugs, the way the radios were programmed, were incorrectly programmed. The radios weren't searching and scanning the way they're supposed to. We spent the time and money, had them reprogrammed, turned all the things on that needed to be turned on and off the things that didn't, and we still had problems. Did another work order later in the year. This is, like, we're talking twenty-two. Uh, they came back up, they looked at everything, and now they're telling us, told me, that we suspect that it's the repeaters that were in the Lowry Tower. But they're Motorola repeaters. Motorola had dated those out. They didn't support them any longer, so there was nothing really they could do. We had to wait until, uh, we were getting new repeaters in twenty-three, and was it around June of twenty-three?
Tom?
May, May-June, we got this new repeaters in, in this new system, this, uh, the P twenty-five, which is just an upgraded of the, uh, security systems and the way it operates. And they told us that things would be better. So we ended up having to wait, you know, seven, eight months just for that to happen, and then when they put the new repeaters in, I don't think it got better. Frankly, my opinion is it got worse. Would, would you concur to that?
I guess from our end, I haven't noticed that they got worse, but they said they have.
Okay. Um, so I, I was trying to work some backside deals with some of the techs and, and with, with, uh, some of the Bit techs, and, and I tried some stuff over the winter, and nothing was working. And finally, I, I did send in another work order earlier this year. Glenham was horrible. Mowbridge is spotty. Um, they sent a tech up. I took him over to Glenham, drove him around, showed him the, the problems, that we have enough signal strength, it's just not connecting to the tower. Long story short, he left, said, yeah, there's a problem. He left, went to Pier, closed the work order out and said, further review required. I don't know who's gonna further review a closed-out work order, but I wasn't very happy. Uh, I waited for a while, probably just till my blood pressure came down. I didn't say anything I was gonna regret. But I did send an email, frankly, out of desperation, to the head of Bit and the tower, um, comms guy in Pier. And I flat-out told him, it's been two and a half years, nothing's happened. This is an officer safety issue. This is a public safety issue. And I'm getting no help from you guys. None. So what are we gonna do? What's the solution? That's the backstory. Finally, that email got some, got some momentum. Uh, they both drove up here, saw the problem for themselves, recognized that there is some degradation of service. We're not able to get, connect to the towers all the time. Just this afternoon, out in that accident, I tried to call the PD from my truck and couldn't get a tower. It's, shouldn't be this way. So here's the crux of it. They're looking into it. But what I want you guys to know is the same thing I told my commission, uh, last week, is I have a feeling when they find a solution, we're, we, you guys in the city and the county, we're, are probably gonna be on the hook financially for whatever that solution is. And I don't know if it's a hundred percent on the hook, or fifty percent, or twenty percent. I don't know what that looks like, 'cause we don't even know what the problem is. I have an opinion. I mean, I'm no ra- radio expert, but I've been around them for a while, and my opinion is, you know, if I had a map, I'd show you, but there's a tower in Lowry, one in Harriet, and one south of McLaughlin. And where those three intersect, the range, Mowbridge sits in an intersection of three different tower sites. So we're on the outer fringe of all three towers, which means we just don't get really good connection. Uh, so my opinion is what we, what would solve the problem for Mowbridge and Glenham, and probably a lot of others, would be a tower. You have the petition for a tower, and guys, you're not gonna, guys and gals, you're not gonna like the price tag. If we had the tower and the land and the house, it's still a half million dollars. If they've gotta procure the land, build the house, put the tower up, and all the equipment, it's, it's north of a million. Again, it can be petitioned through the Public Service Council or Communications Council to see if they can get leverage from legislative to fund some or all. But that's, that's the far end. Again, I don't know that that's gonna fix the problem. I'm hoping now that State Radio Bit has actually taken this serious, um, I'm hoping that we'll get some definition, some, some guidance as to what we need to do to have reliable communications up here. One of the things we're doing temporarily, and I just got them yesterday, so jury's still out, is, is, uh, it's an LTE radio. Rather than operating on the radio system directly, it goes through cellular, which connects to the state radio system. Uh, but you're talking twenty-nine dollars a month per device for two years, and that's another cost that's gonna end up coming out of somebody's pocket, 'cause the state's not gonna pay for it. And there's other intermediate things that possibly could happen. I mean, the digital video, or dig- digital radios, uh, amplifiers and things like that. I don't know. Uh, when we get to that point, I'll have the state radio guy come up and let him technology, or he can just let you guys know what that technology's gonna look like. My big issue here is I just wanted you to know that it is a problem. It's been a problem, and it's still a problem, and we're hopefully making some progress, but I want you guys to know that it exists. So I'm not asking for nothing. This was a hundred percent inform- informative, unless you guys have questions for me.
Any questions, comments?
I guess if they kept billing us, if I'm following you, it fixed up or it wasn't fixed?
They don't bill us, 'cause they, they were trying to work on their system, thinking that, you know, trying to determine if it was their system or if it was our programming. And that's what I said. At first, they told us it was our programming. We fixed that, and it still didn't work. So then they thought it was the tower. Well, put new equipment in the tower, and the problem is still there. So I, I don't know where the problem lies, other than we're in a low spot, on the fringe of three towers, and we don't have really super-strong signal strength there. It should be enough, honestly, but it's not.
Jeff, is this, is this a, like, percentage-wise, is this a city issue or a county issue?
I'd say fifty-fifty.
But Warhawk is county, right?
Well, Warhawk is five counties. But we're not talking about the Warhawk system. We're talking about the state of South Dakota system, which is the one that all of law enforcement, fire, and ambulances use for response, is the state system. The digital system that they have.
So who can't talk to who? Can our dispatch call Chief?
Well, Chief, would you wanna tell them, like, some of the problems that you've noted, or?
I mean, that's like, I mean, as far as the digital radio go, our cars, most of the time, they work in town, but we also carry portables on our vests or whatever. Um, our digital ones very rarely work, just because I think where we're at and the, and the strength of those radios, they, they just don't work. So we ended up buying analog radios that we can pretty much hit our dispatch, and that's pretty much what we use all the time right now. When the guys are out of their cars and stuff, but like, if we go in, into Brown Pals, depending where we get in there, they don't work either. So then we have to use our cellphones.
That's a real safety issue.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause now you got your eyes up. Somebody you're dealing with, you're trying to dial numbers, things like that. So, but it's, you know, the, the state radio system has been that way for, since I've been here, thirty years. You know, it's just always been, they always, it's, you're in a hole. Uh, they're gonna work that well, but.
Do any other areas have this issue?
So I know Glenham is, is, is in another one of those low spots that just doesn't get very good service. Um, uh, New Everts is off and on. It, it's usually pretty decent in New Everts, just because of the line of sight to the tower, even though it's in a low spot. Um, I know the sheriff has mentioned he's had some issues connecting in, like, Java and Salvi sometimes. It, it's just, yeah, there's, again, I can't tell you for sure what the problem is. I, I, I have my ideas, but.
But it's the majority of Warwick County.
Well, until you get farther down the southeast, the closer you get to the Lowry Tower, it's a non-issue. Right here in Mowbridge, if I, if I was to pull in a radio and look at the signal strength between Corson County Tower south of, of McLaughlin and the Lowry Tower down here, they're almost identical in signal strength. And we're a lot closer to the Lowry Tower than we are the, the Corson County Tower, but it's just the terrain. And the VHF radio waves don't follow terrain very well. They're just too narrow, and they, they good for long-range distance, straight line, but they don't follow terrain very well. And that's where we're kinda running into this issue. The, in talking with the head of Bit a couple weeks ago when he was here, it kinda sounds like the new wave over, the new technology going forward is all cellular. They're, they're putting, even the Highway Patrol right now, they're running with these radios. We're talking like seven, eight thousand dollars a radio. But they have the ability to either connect straight to the state radio system, but if it's not a good signal, it'll automatically revert and go LTE and use the cellso- cellular system. So those guys are always, plus they have Wi-Fi built into their cars, so that they've got it. They've got it coming. That, you know, our city and our county, we're not gonna go spending an extra, I'm guessing, twenty thousand dollars per vehicle for Wi-Fi and a expensive LTE radio. And, and that's the other rub is, geez, how much did the city just spend, and, and the county as well, and the fire departments, on new radios because of this P twenty-five upgrade they did last year? Am I wrong to say over a hundred thousand? Between dispatch councils and all the vehicles?
No.
Just for your city of Mowbridge?
We got grants, but.
But yeah, we, I mean, there was a lot of money spent upgrading our equipment, only to find out that some of the equipment we got probably isn't gonna have much of a, of a life left.
The other side of that is if you're, you said about a million dollars for a new tower?
Mm-hmm.
So you can pay a lot of fees on the LTEs before you even come close to making up the difference of, and if they're better coverage, you know, maybe that's an option.
Yeah.
Well, you know, you talk about other counties', uh, ability to communicate on the state radio system. You get between McLaughlin-McIntosh, it's zero. McLaughlin-Taleman is zero. Uh, McIntosh-Izville is zero. Salford, cellphones over Salford. We're going east, it's way better.
Mm-hmm.
But you had anywhere west, it, it's almost nonexistent.
Yeah. A- again, folks, I, I don't, I don't know that I have a, a, a definite answer for you. They're gonna do their studies, and that's, I actually sent him a list of locates, times, locations, radio IDs of times that he couldn't connect to a tower, and he finally told me to stop, because he goes, this is gonna take me a long time to get there. Like, well, then at least you've got enough to generate some type of a plan or an idea. So now, I guess at this point, I wait and see what they come up with. If their, if their suggestion is we roll over everything to LTE as being the cheapest thing, again, I know the state won't pay for that. So that's on the city, it's on the county. Uh, if it's a tower, then I guess it's a tower, but, you know, valid point. For even a half a million dollars, if we could get access to a tower, depending on how much, if anything, the state would put in on it, you could, you could spend three hundred and sixty bucks per officer for a lot of years to make up half a million dollars. But then comes the next part. In four or five years, when the APX, the forty-five hundred radios that everybody in the county's using, pretty much, is, is obsolete, and Motorola doesn't support it, and now we gotta go buy eight thousand dollar LTE radios to do it, or we can buy a cheaper radio that'll use the current system, you know? It, it, you know, it'll, it'll drive me nuts. I don't know the answer yet. I just don't. But I want you guys to know that it is an issue. I know Justin, a lot of times, says he can't even call ten-eight from his house. He's gotta wait, there's a block or two from his house to even be able to get onto the radio.
Yeah, in fact, the other day, um, I made a log in a, in Zerk or two, but I was on Twelve Street and, I think, Second Avenue West, which was by Justin's house. Tried calling on the radio, couldn't get out of my car.
Yeah, that, it's just an officer and a public safety issue, guys. It, it's not good. Other questions for me?
Questions, comments? Don't think so.
All right, well, then I'm on my way to Indiana.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
It's only about a thousand miles.
I'm only gonna do a couple hundred tonight.
Okay. Um, looks like you're up, Chief.
It's me. Um, I only got one thing on the agenda tonight. Um, I'd like to ask the council to approve hiring Lily Plom as a police officer at twenty-one twenty per hour, effective September third.
Any questions, comments? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kimnitz.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Mound. Yes.
Cerny.
Yes.
Reichert.
Yes. That's all, yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Um, up next, wastewater department. Kirk, Smaltz, or do we want Jared first?
Um, we can go first here.
Okay.
I'd just like to ask you guys this evening to approve, uh, task order number two for more engineering in the amount of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars for the water plant rehab project. Do you have any questions about it, though? Jared is here to answer those questions.
Do we have questions on this? So in a nutshell, this is everything we've talked about up to this point, right?
Uh, for the water plant rehab?
Yeah, on this one here.
Yep.
Yeah, it looks like two hundred and ninety-nine thou- two hundred and ninety-nine, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So, anyway, there you go.
For their engineering for construction.
Okay. So, any questions or comments on that? Okay, I guess if not, I'll look for a motion to approve task order number two.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Kimnitz.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Mound.
Yes.
Cerny.
Yes.
Reichert.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
And then for the second part here, we got Jared to talk about, uh, an alternate for the wastewater treatment plant design.
Hey, thanks, Kurt. Um, Jared Klubundy, more engineering. Um, asking my coworker to dial in as well.
It's gonna be Jim, right?
Jim Sepp with more engineering. Yes, you've seen Jim here a few times. Uh, he leads our water wastewater group.
Hey, Jim, this is Heather in Mowbray City Council. Jared's here too. So you're online.
Okay, so what we have here for you tonight, um, last month I was here and I, I mentioned that, um, we were kinda, um, narrowing in on some recommendations here at the wastewater plant. Um, I handed out two items to you guys. Um, so I'll just kinda back up and, and, and talk for those that need a refresher, um, but we began a wastewater study for you in two thousand and twenty-one, and the scope was to look at, um, the, the plant top to bottom. Generally make recommendations, provide a long-term solution for, for us. The technical memo here is actually, um, the new alternative we put together, or the, or what we believe will be our recommended path forward. Um, the other one, the, the maps here, uh, you've seen these before. Map one and two are similar to what we looked at back in December and in April. Um, and then map number three, I'll just walk you through the, the subtle differences between, um, those then and, and, and now. So, again, I'm gonna hit on some of the high points. Um, Mowbridge operates a Class Three wastewater treatment facility from nineteen fifty-nine. Um, if you're looking at this front page here, um, it's color-coded, explains how the plant was built, how it was expanded, what year it was expanded, and the reasons why it was expanded are, um, more closely explained in the, in the full engineer's report, which you should have access to. I can obviously get more copies as, as needed, but it's been expanded three different times. If you, uh, would like, I'll, um, I'll kinda touch on, um, page two here again. The preliminary engineer's report looked at three options. It looked at a do-nothing alternative. It looked at an equipment, um, replacement alternative, and then it looked at a, uh, a little more robust solution to get you, um, like, a thirty-year design life, um, at the, at the facility. So this page two here, like I said, you've seen before. The engineer's opinion of cost was eight point two million dollars, and it was gonna address problem areas, um, outdated equipment, um, adding redundancy in places, and, uh, how to deal with the, uh, the biosolids at the, or the, um, the sludge at the, uh, end of the facility. So you actually have, um, applied for and, um, um, received funding for that full eight point two million dollar project. We've had public meeting on it. We've talked about it. Um, I think our mission at this point, though, a, a few months ago, is to try to do some value engineering, try to make it a little less costly, look at a few alternatives, um, to try and bring down the cost a little bit. So we've met with your team. We came up with some ideas that we, we think can provide some, some value. Again, this is all explained in, in depth in the, in the memo that you have, but I'm just trying to hit on the executive summary here, I guess. So, um, you can follow along here and just look at the, at the page three on the, uh, um, the maps that I handed out. Generally, um, an eight point two million dollar project to address all these areas, um, would, would be, uh, uh, the, the best-case scenario, but we believe we've, we've come up with a solution that will still accomplish the same goals, will still allow some growth potential, um, be a little different operational procedures for some of the, the operators out there. But I, I think of it in, in three parts. Um, the, what we, what I called part one here at the top, it's to, uh, um, decommission the trickling filters and, and put in a, a joint aeration selector basin facility there in the, in the kind of the middle of the plant. It's gonna take some staging and some bypass pumping in order to do that. But, um, previously, um, we looked to reuse a couple of the older facilities that were trying to be efficient, but maybe wasn't as efficient as we'd like it to be. Um, there were some limitations with the, the size and the shapes and, and what we could do. So we, we believe a, a smaller joint facility, you see, I've got a, kind of a rectangle drawn there, it'd be one new facility with different compartments, uh, a little deeper in order to provide the same capacity. So that would be one part of it. We, we like that alternate. Um, on this map, you can see two orange facilities. It'd be the trickling filter and the aeration basin. Those facilities will both be decommissioned and removed. So that's what I'm then calling part one of this work. Part two of the work here is, as you get further along through the diagram or through the, the flow of the wastewater here, you get to the final clarifiers. Um, the original intent was to, um, build two new final clarifiers in, again, using some value engineering and, and trying to be, um, resourceful here. Um, the plan here is to build one new clarifier, and once the new clarifier is in place, to reuse, to rehabilitate the other clarifier. So this is only possible because of building a joint facility over here in this location, in, in that spot, because before we had tried, we were gonna repurpose this one and then build two new ones. So by building a joint facility here, we can now take advantage of using this and this. Um, it's a, it's a smart idea. Um, the next step for us is, of course, to provide this alternative to the Department of Ag and Natural Resources to ensure that they're okay with it. It's a, it's a little bit, um, I'm not gonna say it's against the rules, but we, we need buy-in from the state on this alternative. I think it'd be a good cost-saving option, though, for the, for the city. The third part of the plant is, is dealing with your sludge at the end. Obviously, as, as wastewater goes through here, it takes about eight hours to run wastewater through the system and, and treat it, so that we can discharge clean water to the lake. The sludge goes the other direction, and then you have to deal with the sludge. Right now, you land-apply it. Um, the idea here is to, to do mechanical de-watering, which would basically thicken up that sludge so that we can landfill it. Gives us the operators a lot more, um, control over things. So there would be, these are what are called the, uh, um, settling basins would be removed. We, we place a small building there with a mechanical de-watering facility in there. Overall, this project, the, the flow diagram, the flow of the wastewater through the plant where you remove, you know, you treat X percent through this stage, and then X percent through this stage, and X percent through this stage, is still gonna be the same. It's just a little smaller, a little tighter. Um, and so I, I believe this alternative, um, we believe is gonna cost in, in the range of, of seven million dollars. Um, it's an engineer's opinion of cost at this point. Um, it's about one point two million dollars less than the original recommended alternative. Um, so at that point, um, I think we've achieved what we wanted to, which is still to address all of the problems, set us up so that we can deal with different regulatory changes as they come and go, whether it's ammonia, whether it's nitrogen, or, or whatever the, the, the state or the, the discharge permit requirements are gonna be. Um, but at this point, are there any questions for me?
So that proposed clarifier that you're putting in there, that'd, uh, basically give us the redundancy that they want? So what you're, on this proposal here, then?
Yes, and Jim, J- Sepp, if I say anything wrong, please correct me. But yes, so you have one final clarifier now that has been in continuous operation, I believe, for over thirty years, and you have no way of taking it offline, because it's, they, they, they did this spring temporarily to examine it, um, but soon as they did, you know, it's like a ticking clock, you know, you.
So this smaller, uh, outline, that doesn't denote that it, this couldn't handle the capacity if the other one went off, the older one went off?
So that's part of the reason why we need approval from the DA and R. Our pro- proposed plan here is to build the second one smaller, so that they can be operated either.
And still can have capacity for the city.
Yes. Yep, yep. So during your. Yes, yep, yep. So during your peak times, you'd most likely need to operate the larger one, and then during some slower, uh lower-flow seasons, we could operate either one of them, but you could operate both of them.
It looks like most of the time of the year, we don't have a lot of inflating filtration, which is probably for the records, it looks like it's most, most times of the year, they're more further. Depends for that, if you were to get a really big storm and break each peak, then it's kind of, it depends on a lot of the clarifiers.
I guess what what I'm here to do is, um we provided a a preliminary engineer's report that provided a recommendation for kind of a a take-care-of-everything type of problem, and we have funding set up for that alternative. And if you're happy with this, what I'm calling this is an amendment to the report, which provides another alternative. If you're happy with this, we will provide this to DA and R, ask them um to agree that this will still, you know, achieve make sure that the funding still will su- will pay for this and that they would support this type of project. If they do, um then we're ready to begin design. We've got a million dollars of CDPG money, and then the rest is funded through the uh CWSRF program. So they're they're just kind of on standstill now until um we have a recommended path forward.
Do you feel like there's any reason anybody would balk at alternative number four?
Jim, that's a question for you. Um I think every state is different. Uh do you have any opinion on that, Jim?
I I don't have any reason to believe that, do I? Yeah, it's it's definitely an improvement over what you have, but providing additional redundancy. What it needs would be all of ten state standards. I think it's that they might sometimes have under standards or new standards that are education that maybe are a little more strict than the ten state standards, but hopefully self-concurrence. I don't I don't think they do, at least don't have it published.
So if you if you page through the the technical memorandum, the other attachments, um the the bio- biology and the chemistry that 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 have to happen out there, we provided the technical recommendations to say this will work. That this is what they need, this is what, this will provide the redundancy and be a long-term solution, and I believe their engineers will concur with it, but I just, we haven't submitted it yet.
Is your plan upon factoring growth? Because I I I don't know this, but our water treatment plant and sewer plant, whatever you wanna call it, was supposedly be able to handle six thousand, sixty-five hundred people, in in a nutshell. Does what you're designing, does it still have the same capacity of what we're building on now, or will it be less capacity?
So um to answer your question, um the the design population or kind of the um the average daily flow would be based on a population of thirty-seven hundred people, and it should provide, we should have about twenty percent growth potential on that.
So we're cutting way back then?
I don't know that I know if if it was designed for six thousand. It's it's more of like a flow. So for instance, like three hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons per day is the flow that you experience. So whatever the flows were when it was originally designed, I I can't say.
Yeah, I don't know either, but that's just what we were always told, that both were designed for about that that population. Well, actually, Moberge at one time was five thousand people. So I mean, we're designing for three thousand, maybe we should be designing for five at minimum, or forty-five.
I think I have, I mean, I I have t- I have twenty percent excess capacity now. If you guys would like to go a little bigger, we have, that's your decision.
And 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 I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
Yep, yep. And I think that's a reasonable decision, or a reasonable thing for you guys to discuss as we move forward here, definitely.
I got a question on the technology. On this here, uh propose number four, or the amendment two, this would keep us concurrent, maybe, you know, as what I'm, as far as uh the way the layout and the design of it is too, that we would be in compliance for a few more years and we wouldn't have to sit there and adjust our technology or anything like that? I gotta kinda get where I'm coming from a little bit there.
You wanna make sure that you're set up to be able to address changes in regulatory requirements?
That's exactly, yep.
Yep, yep. And Jim, you wanna answer that question?
Yeah, the technology is uh it's uh it's talking to biological processes, probably the most classic of all technologies. And it's relatively simple, it's just floors and there's ehrtion and mixers, so it's not complex equipment. The process is right now is set up with nitrogen and ammonia removal, which is going above and beyond the permanent current requirements. So yeah, I I don't see that. I'm also changing your permanent and putting higher nutrient in there. It's it's a possibility sometime in the future if they do implement an ammonia or hydrogen limit, but you know, it already be posted up there.
So, right, it it I'll just follow up on that. Some of the information from the technical memos basically say that no ammonia limits will be included with this permit renewal, so y- your your permit does not require them, but it says right in there, the permit may be reopened to include ammonia limits in the future if it is determined necessary. So we know that could happen, and we're setting it up so that it we can address or will be ready for that, if it happens, yep.
So more so to Kyle's question on the capacities. So over the course of twenty years, Moberge's population does go to five thousand, which I'm guessing this plant handled it at one point in time at the five thousand. So thirty-seven hundred plus the twenty percent were not to five thousand. How difficult would it be to take this existing facility to five thousand then as opposed to now?
Jim, you wanna answer that question?
Yeah, it might mean uh putting uh changing out the like the things like the irrigation bores of the irrigation system and biological or the tanks. Not the way to talk about capacity, but you know, if we're talking organic ability to those tanks, uh they already have built into them just for keeping factor two hundred percent of surge capacity over here. They just kinda call it the diurnal or, you know, variation that you get throughout a day, but that's what we built in. And uh really all it all it's down to is just needing to provide more air to those basins for more oxygen. It's what you need to provide additional.
I get the.
Whether it could reach five thousand people, I think, I have to look at that and paper, but I do know there's just inherently what the design, I think their size or. No, it's not, it's not like it's a fixed or an absolute limit all the time, you're gonna go or if you're, you know, ten people over or something, but.
I get the sense that what you're thinking is that permanent structures should be sized large enough to handle growth, and then if specific equipment has to be changed in fifteen or twenty years or or expanded, at least we're not digging stuff out of the ground, that the 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 infrastructure is sized accordingly, right?
Basically, the brick vessels or the vessels that contain the stuff are would be sized appropriately, then.
Large enough, yep. I don't think that changes much in our design. It might add a a couple foot of diameter to some of the structures, but I wouldn't change the cost estimates now or anything. But I could certainly change some of the discussion.
If there was a space to, there would be room to expand in such a period, you have another addition thing for the structure. And I was kind of challenging space because there's not much room in there to work, keep the, is this even a issue being in service?
Jim, I mean, I think that was a good question brought up by Kyle because when he started talking about that, I got to thinking how this Rapid City and Sioux Falls do it. I think they're growing pretty good, so what's happening to their wastewater treatment infrastructure?
Getting bigger.
They're big, adding on Rapid City is.
So um I guess at this point, um if you if if you want to us to make modifications to this, we'll modify them. But my next step that I'd like permission for is to um is to provide this alternative for two DA and R for their consideration. And um if approved, then um I guess I'm assuming that we'll proceed with plans and uh um just make sure we secure those two funding sources. Most likely with construction, you know, in a year or so, as soon as we get all the permits and approvals in place.
What's the council think? Is Kurt on board? Kurt, just the direction you wanna go?
Yeah, this is this is what we've been talking about, so this design here, I think is gonna work out pretty well for us.
Okay. More questions or comments from the council? Okay, well, I think we're down to, you need a motion to proceed, correct?
Yes, I think what I, I think what it, what I'm, I don't know what it says on the uh agenda here, but generally, um it's just that you agree that alternative four is the direction that you you wanna proceed.
Yeah, it just says discuss or approve alternatives to the project designed for the wastewater treatment plant. So with all of that being said, I guess I'd look for a motion to proceed with alternative four as presented by more engineering.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. Heather, would you call the roll?
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
I just want you to know too, I mean, as if we're working six months of design, and we'll we'll probably have twenty other questions or discussions during that time, and if you wanna size some stuff up, you guys, that's your decision, right? This is not like the drop-dead decision time. This is just a, it's a design concept that we want concurrence from from the regulatory agency, okay?
Thank you.
Yep. All right, and I don't have any other um items for approval, um just a quick mention. No, no approval items for uh Crow River or or um the the tank contractor. There will be, obviously, in the near future. We're working on the biological assessment that we talked about for the water intake project. That field work will be done in September. And there are still a couple warranty items that we're dealing with at the wastewater treatment plant. It's it's not an issue, we're just kinda waiting for the uh um the supplier of the contractor to warranty their their paint defects. So kinda just being tracked and will be addressed eventually. Any questions for me?
No. No.
Thank you, folks.
All right, thank you.
Good one. Thanks, Jim.
All right, up next, that takes us into the park department. Um first item is um approve estimate to remodel the MYO bathrooms. Looks like in your packet, there's a proposal from Blankerts Construction. Was there anyone to speak on that, or is someone to hit the high points?
So this is, this is the MYO bathrooms that are in the MYO shed. There's a lot more activity up at the Legion Park, so these bathrooms have become inefficient. So this proposal puts two stalls in each bathroom. It um puts some ventilation in there. It redoes the walls, so we can just go in and hose it down. Floor drains. Um this this quote has gone up five hundred dollars since it was last quoted. But I quoted it earlier this spring, so that's expected.
Heather and I went up there and visited those last year even in there. There's no ventilation, they're not big enough. They're really hard to clean, the floor drains.
They smell bad. They need upgraded. Um the I'm proposing taking it out of, we had budgeted um for the East Play Park to the city's share of that. That project is not going to happen this year because we didn't reach our funding goal. It's more than likely gonna be in twenty twenty-five. I've rebudgeted in this budget that you're gonna approve here shortly, so I'm proposing you take it out of that line item in the budget. I did reach out for other, to other contractors. I reached out to uh four of them, and Blankerts Construction was the only one who called me back.
And you started this six, seven months ago trying to get.
Yeah, this was like in Jan, February. It was cold out when we went up there, yeah. Which is why the price went up five hundred bucks. So I'm asking for twenty-seven thousand six hundred. And he maybe can do it this fall yet.
Any questions or comments? So hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the quote as amended for twenty-seven thousand six hundred dollars to proceed with the remodel of the MYO bathrooms with Blankerts Construction.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
All right, next, another big one, discussion on pool slide and repair quote. Was that you, Kurt, or did you wanna hit the mark on this?
No, Kurt's gonna talk about the slide. He's the one who's been involved in that a lot.
Sorry, I got ahead of myself on the bathrooms, Kurt.
No, it's right. Uh so about a couple weeks ago, Splash Tackler came up here for a slide inspection. As you know, we shut it down early for the pool season due to a separation between two slide um sections. So we had to come up here and take a look at it, and in their inspection, they found a couple things other than just that separation of the slide, the slide uh sections there. So you can see in your packet um what they have found as far as some of the paint chipping, um a couple gaskets between slide sections that have uh started to push through, which is a normal occurrence. It's just a maintenance issue. Um and you can see there's some paint chips on the exterior of the slide, and then there are some pictures, um we can get those in color at some point for you guys. But there's some paint uh drips onto the inside of what they call the slide em- or the slide envelope, which is the interior part of the slide. So they came with some recommendations for repairing the slide. Um oh also, the steps up to the tower, you can see there's some photos there. There's some deflection, which is like a warping of it. If you step on it, it flexes down. They would like to, their recommendation is to secure that to the tower, but in those, also in these pictures, you can see where there's some cracking of the fiberglass, uh which is a safety issue with wet feet. If you are walking on that, you may get a nice fiberglass sliver, which would not be fun and probably ruin your day. So um then there is some chipping and paint blemishes on the inside of the slide area where people would be going down. And once that paint or gel coat is off of the slide, it exposes the fiberglass, which could also end up ruining someone's day with a nice uh fiberglass sliver. So that is what they picked out as being some safety issues, along with that separation of the slide sections. So we just wanted to bring this to your attention today, um to be discussed. They did, I don't know if it's in the packet or not, but they did send a breakdown of some of the repair, repair costs for that. I don't see it in this one, but if you look on.
I shared the email with the the total, but not the breakdown. We got that after the packet had gone out.
Yep, so looking at the breakdown of just what they were looking at, um what they had noted under steel support of the tower, they're looking at uh thirty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars to power wash paint and do some uh rust remediation, and also potentially replace some of the bracing arms where the slide is pulling apart. It's what they believe is causing that issue. So they have a new design that they would put in on those two sections. And so that'd be for two arms, or we could replace all of the supporting arms with the new design. Then for the interior of the slide, it's thirty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty dollars for realigning the two seams, putting new caulking in all the seams, sanding, and painting and gel coating the inside of the slide. And then if we were to do anything with the exterior of the slide, they do suggest or have noted that it should be repainted as fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. And then if we were to do anything with the exterior of the slide, they do suggest or have noted that it should be repainted as fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
So that would be the grand total of eighty-five, nine eighteen?
Yep.
For the whole Chris Mash, okay.
Tell them about the slide program where you pay every five years or something.
So they do have it, you see it's marked on there, it's called the Keep a New Maintenance, uh, Solutions and More. I did talk with Jimmy, uh, a little bit before the council meeting here. There, there's some pricing that involves the length of our slide, which apparently we have a very long slide for the industry, um, height of the slide and all the work that it would entail. So he is going to be giving us some numbers on what that would look like for a yearly, uh, maintenance program, if you will. So part of it entails is that they come and buff and wax the inside of the slide. And do, do an inspection, and depending on the work that we're requesting, you will see a, what, what the, the price will change. But he's gonna give me some more information, it's much more detailed than that, it's pretty in-depth, so I don't really wanna speak too heavily on it, but that, that is coming.
Yeah, so it's more like a, what'd you call it, a, some type of program that you can have him come?
It's the Keep a New Maintenance Program that they have, yep.
So more to come on that.
Yes, other than, do you wanna say that they, the, there are, that they are safety issues that we're addressing? So how you wanna address them, do you wanna piecemeal it out, do you wanna do it all at once? There's some discussion to be had on that by the council, how they, how we like, how you like to go about that is basically what.
When would these be done, if, if they had to do these repairs, when would they be done, would affect it the season?
It's, uh, it's up to, I, I'm not sure, because we'd have to get on their, their schedule.
But we cannot open the slide until this is done, till pieces of this are done, because it's a safety issue. So you could get by, say you wanted to do the first couple things and get the safety issues done, you could get by not painting.
The exterior, so talking, talking with Jimmy today, he mentioned that there's the, there's a couple safety items and we can clarify to make sure, but it's the blemishes, the blemishes on the inside of the slide, fixing the gaps and fixing the stairs up to the tower, those are the big safety concerns. Which would probab, which would entail at least replacing those two brackets. And then you'd end up gel coating it because you're gonna have to sand all these black, uh, patches anyways, all these blemishes, and be, just be doing the slide anyhow, so the interior.
So it's a lot of money either way, so if you guys wanna spend it all upfront or over the course of years?
It'd be nice to get it done if they're here.
What's a ride path blemish?
So it's a chip inside where you're, so the ride path is where the body would be for the tub of water, right? The blemish could either be a raised piece of the gel coat, it could be, um, or, or a chip. So if the gel coat is chipped off and you can see the fiberglass, if you can end up pe- peeling off a large chunk of that gel coat, it's because it's, it's like plastic. So you get up into that and that's the blemish, and it starts small, gets bigger, but you're, you could get cut going down.
Did he have any, um, off the record opinion of the wo- work that had been done to it?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz that, we talked about that today.
There's nothing that's been done on the inside.
I mean, but the, oh, the, the painting hasn't been done in the inside.
This would be the first time that we would have someone come from outside of the city, come in and do anything on the inside.
And that was just, what do we, we looked it up today, yesterday, five years ago.
Five years?
And they've been back every year fixing?
Yeah, twice, so on the last?
Fixing the issues that we've had with it, okay, but.
Okay, so we don't need a motion tonight, we're just gonna?
We're just giving you information and I think we're gonna get more information, just, this is out there. If we're gonna open the slide again next summer, we have to do something, or we have to leave it shut.
What does a smaller, shorter slide cost new?
I don't know.
We can find out.
I mean, what's, what's the usage of that slide, do you?
It's not good.
Do you pay a lifeguard to be on top all day long, twelve to eight, and maybe three kids go down maybe half hour?
Do you think it's because of how it is though, or do you think it's just something that is, it's not interesting to the kids that are using the pool right now?
I think it's just because, uh, it's so high. You know, even just to get me up there, you're just, you get tired on the way up, you go down a couple times and then you're just exhausted, you're like, okay, I'm gonna go swim. They love the boards, they love the play, the playset and just to swim, swim, but slides are just not a huge thing right now, I don't, you know. So, just depends on what we get.
And if we had something that wasn't quite as high, would you get more use out of the main part of the pool because you wouldn't have to keep that exit? No, you'd still have to keep the same amount of exit?
Right now we have the exit, which is almost like an eight by twelve foot because of the, the water slush coming out. You can't have kids come there, 'cause it'll take them under and just drag them right under. Um, if we did have a shorter slide with not such a high height requirement, that would allow more kids to go down. So right now it's forty-eight inches high for you to go down, a lot of kids are not that, that come to our pool, all our kids are tiny. So the, the kids that do ride it right now are middle school and high schoolers, but they like the boards. So if you had something smaller, I think it would get more use because if the kids were shorter, if it had a different height requirement. I don't know how that goes with how high the slides are or not, or how fast it goes, but that'd be something to look into definitely.
Explain the bottom of the slide too, just so everybody knows that.
So, so you know, we have our pool, but the bottom of the slide, when you come out, it's such a huge rush of water where it pushes you down to the, down to the bottom of the pool and it pushes you out towards the deep end. So right now, you know, we have a lifeguard sitting there, but this huge eight foot by twelve foot span of the pool is unusable. We have to keep kids on there because if somebody comes blasting out of the slide, it's gonna hurt them. Or if a kid even comes close to swimming, you know, it's three feet and kids at three feet sometimes can't swim, they get too close, they get in that rush of water and it pulls them under, and that's where we have, I think, most of the saves during the summer, at least a couple a day, so.
So would that change with a smaller slide?
I would hope so, I would hope that the rush of the water would maybe slow down, but I don't know. I've only seen big tall slides like ours, I don't know about smaller ones. You know, back in the day, in the eighties, when the nineties with our old pool, it was that twelve foot slide? You know, where there was nothing in, in the bottom, there was no rush of water, it was just a little trickle, but I don't know if that would make a big difference or not, or.
We can, we can check into all the options.
Yeah.
Because do you still take that canopy down every year? Cuz that's a problem too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, yeah, that upper canopy over the slide, yeah, we take that down here.
It's a safety issue.
That's a safety issue for whoever's taking it down, that's an acrobatic act up there.
Well, it's so high, um, when we get the gust of above thirty miles per hour, we have to shut down the slide whether it's working or not because you can see it going back and forth, and you also see the, uh, Memorial Legion Park light posts are right next to us and there, a safety issue there, and then they're like, why are we closed? Well, it's because of the wind, so it's, I mean, the height definitely makes a hu- huge difference for us, but it's a huge attraction to look at it.
To drive by and see it.
To drive by, go, wow, look how high, no, it's not.
Yeah.
Definitely look into different things to put there would be an option for sure.
I don't know, I would like to see what a, what a smaller, I mean, uh, they're probably very, very expensive. But if we're gonna spend the money, if we're gonna make a commitment, maybe we wanna, I don't know, even a couple years out, put money into something that the, the kids are gonna use and, you know, if you have to have somebody up there all the time and at the bottom of the pool, so it's really two lifeguards.
Two lifeguards.
Managing a slide that gets used minimally.
Maybe three kids for half hour go down, maybe, that's a big maybe, so.
So more to come from the pool committee on that one.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come up with some more options and bring them forward, um, either in October or November.
Any more discussion on that? All right, I think that's it. Unless you wanna talk about the shooting range too?
I don't know anything about it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, up next, uh, last item under parks, approve agreement with game, fish and parks regarding the shooting range. Uh, it's a joint powers agreement, uh, I believe the only thing that's changing is the renewal dates. So we are just ex, the state and the city, we're extending that, uh, to December thirty-one of twenty-nine, it's getting ready to expire this year, so. In case anybody's wondering, in my opinion, that is a world-class shooting range that's free to the public, you would have to pay to go to another shooting range like that. So, uh, if there's no other comments or discussion, I'd look for a motion to approve the agreement with game and fish.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, up next, uh, finance, approve first reading of ordinance number twenty-four zero one, this is our twenty twenty-five appropriation ordinance. Before Heather starts hitting some high points, I just wanna say, um, you know, do you guys, if, if you vote to approve this, I think this is a pretty bold budget, I think we're gonna do some, uh, good things with this budget coming up, so. Thanks for everybody that sat through and listened to a lot of my ideas and Heather's ideas, so your ideas are probably better than mine, but
Of course.
Nonetheless, so with that, I'll let Heather hit the high points on the budget and then we'll call for a motion to approve.
So the general fund by itself, this year, we're expected to spend four point seven million in the budget. Um, total, if you add in the special revenue funds, we're looking at five point five, and this excludes the enterprise funds, which is water, sewer, cemetery and airport. Um, those are kind of their own separate little islands. Within this budget, it includes a five percent COLA for employees, it includes a streets, new street sweeper, these are some of the big ticket items that's in here. Um, again, as I mentioned earlier, it's rebudgeting the East Play Park, the city had, um, invested or said that they would put in money towards that, and that's seventy thousand dollars, it includes a housing director position, which it will be new to the city. Um, a lot of pool maintenance items that need to get done, uh, the addition of another street maintenance staff and another police vehicle. Um, those are the big things. Um, other than that, I don't really have, I don't foresee a lot of changes to it between now and the second reading. Uh, maybe a couple things that might come up, um, otherwise I think it's a good budget. Um, in the general fund alone, we'll be using six hundred and eighty-five thousand, almost six hundred and eighty-six thousand to make it balance. And what that means is from the revenues that I've estimated and the total expenditures, we're gonna have to use that much in unassigned fund balance or savings to, to function. It's a large number from what we typically do, but I'm comfortable with it because we've got these big ticket items. The, the cash fund balance is, is at a healthy number, so I feel that the city can afford these items. And of course, we never spend every dime we budget either, so there'll be some, some returning.
That's not a challenge to try to spend it all either, if we, so, um, is there any other questions or comments?
We just have to vote no, right?
What's that?
Vote no in November or whatever.
Oh, yes.
Bring that up.
I, I suppose I can hit some high points on that, uh. Yeah, as Heather just said, there's a lot of stuff in this budget, there's some good things in this budget, a new street sweeper, um, housing director, some extra employees. However, I guess everybody that's listening, everybody to my left and right, and everybody out in YouTube land or radio land. Uh, I would encourage you to vote no on initiated measure twenty-five.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, sorry, I vote no on twenty-five, I don't know what that is, but, uh, twenty-eight is, uh, that would affect our revenue stream, that would affect the sales tax that is collected, that's a steady revenue stream for us. So, um, yeah, we just, that needs to be voted down because the South Dakota Municipal League is forecasting, based on their numbers, about a four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar hit in our revenue stream if that passes. And what it is, is, uh, we repeal the sales tax on consumables. So at our last meeting, or a couple of meetings ago, we passed that resolution. Um, there is no definition of consumables, but the closest thing they have is anything basically put in your mouth, which is tobacco, alcohol, food, grocery, soda, a- anything you can imagine, so, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, well, actually that four hundred, it's actually four hundred and sixty-five thousand, but that's just on what we collect in groceries. So if the term consumables is interpreted to mean something bigger, that could include toilet paper, paper towels. I mean, those are all considered consumables because you use them once and they're done. So it could be a lot larger than just food, so that number of four sixty-five could be a lot scarier.
So in my opinion, it's a poorly written initiated measure that could have drastic consequences to this budget and future budgets moving forward. Cuz there is no alternative form of revenue about being presented in that, so, so if that's not?
I guess the, the savings per year that we would really, per person would be like a big drastic one.
Hang on one second. Can we go ahead and call for a motion to approve the first reading of our budget ordinance?
Second.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Okay, now the first reading is passed, now Randy, what were you gonna say?
The, the savings, I'm like voting against that one being?
Well, what the voter's gonna have to decide is, is do they wanna save a couple hundred dollars in, in sales tax? Or what services are we going to, uh, have to cut back on? Cuz as Heather said, if that number gets bigger than four hundred and sixty-five, I believe our street departments, and I'm not saying we're, we would cut one department, please don't interpret it as that. But that's the size of the hole that's gonna blow on our budget is about the street department. So that means all your departments are gonna have to face cuts in, in funding, so, um, yeah. So what services do you wanna go without that are funded out of the general fund, which is police department, street department, library, pool, parks? Am I forgetting anything?
You got the gist in there.
I got the gist of it, so yes, that's a, that's gonna be a huge detriment, not only to us, but even smaller communities. So anyway, vote no on twenty-eight is my thoughts of the day. Um, up next, approve airport grant agreement with, uh, for the master plan project. Did you wanna talk on that, or are you just gonna hit the high point quick?
Um, this is the agreement with the state of South Dakota for our, um, master airport plan that we'll be working on. And this is just the state's portion, which is five percent, and it's in the amount of eighteen thousand and eleven dollars. The big bulk of it is paid by the feds.
So any questions or comments? So hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the airport grant agreement for the master plan project.
I'll move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Reiker?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, up next, approve agreement for generators, um, looks like we have a different company quoting ninety-seven hundred dollars, uh, yearly. And, uh, City of Mowbridge, and it looks like we've got one, two, three, four, five, is that six generators, am I counting those right?
Yep.
So it's looking like six generators that they would be servicing and maintaining, and of course, the cost breakdowns in each generator. But the total is the ninety-seven hundred dollars, so.
Yeah, Cummins was fourteen thousand.
Any questions or comments, oh? Yeah, and I forgot, Heather, like fourteen thousand dollars was that last one?
Yeah, Cummins, the quote for this year was thirteen, well, they came down a little bit to thirteen thousand, so.
So this is a little bit more of a savings with this company.
We're gonna try it.
So we'll give it a try, so if there's no other questions, I'd look for a motion to, uh, approve that.
I'll move.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Okay, up next, public hearing and approval of temporary on-sale liquor licenses, um, first one in your packets from the Lake Oahu Learning Academy. Um, the Mowbridge Pheasant Races happening October nineteenth and twentieth at the Sheerhow Event Center, uh, looks like they're gonna go from five PM to two PM both days for beer, wine and liquor. Uh, is there anyone to speak for or against that? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the Lake Oahu Learning Academy license.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz? Jensen?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Okay, up next, the Mowbridge Pink Ladies is applying for a regional dart tournament, beer, wine and liquor, looks like December seventh, uh, on the first day, ten AM to eleven PM, second day, ten AM, eleven PM, Sheerhow Event Center for beer, wine and liquor. Is there anyone to speak for or against that one? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, up next, Mowbridge Chamber of Commerce for the twenty-fifth annual Mowbridge Ice Fishing Tournament on January the eighth, a one-day event. Um, looks like from eight to eleven, uh, beer is the only item at Sheerhow Arena, Sheerhow Event Center, is there anyone to speak for or against this license? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
The state's not right, is it, Brent? The date.
Oh, it is, actually, they had added it.
Oh, they added that date, okay, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure we had them all.
So moved.
So have motions or second?
Second.
Call the roll please.
Cerny?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, up, uh, we're getting to the bottom of the stack here. Uh, Mowbridge Rodeo Association, uh, looks like they're having a fundraiser on February the eighth. Looks like they, at Sheerhow Event Center, looks like they're applying for beer, wine and liquor, uh, five PM to two AM and five PM to two AM, is there?
I, my question, is that a time, a date issue on there, eighth and ninth, with the AM in the morning?
No.
Okay, just checking, sorry.
Yeah, good question.
Me bad.
You're all right.
Sorry.
Nope, we're good. Okay, so is there anyone to speak for or against the Mowbridge Rodeo fundraiser on February eighth? Okay, hearing none, I will look for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Reiker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson? Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Okay, lastly, uh, once again, Mowbridge Chamber of Commerce, the fifteenth annual Denny Palmer Memorial Classic, June thirteenth and fourteenth. Looks like beer only at Sheerhow Arena, uh, is there anyone to speak for or against that? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll move. Second.
Call the roll please.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz? Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Okay, and lastly, uh, public hearing and approval, uh, transfer of an on-sale liquor license. Um, looks like we're just transferring the license to the Wrangler Inn for on-sale liquor at a restaurant, so we're going back to the Wrangler, right?
Well, it's, it's always been at the Wrangler, it's just taking off the exception, before it was the exception of the restaurant, and now we're taking off the exception, so the only thing that's changed is the legal description.
Okay. Is there anyone to speak for or against that? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the transfer of the on-sale liquor license.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us, uh, concludes new business discussion information items, the financial report, uh, was in your packet, if you have any questions on that, get with Heather at a later date. Um, building permits, looks like eight total building permits were submitted, uh, or approved for a grand total of a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, next up, code enforcement report. That was sent out via email, but it was also placed in front of everyone, um, not gonna read through the whole thing, but it looks like Mike is still out there doing what Mike does. So if you have any questions, get with Heather, uh, get the questions to Mike and see what you've got going on there, um, up next, events report. A lot of stuff in your packet, and I'll just let MJ walk us through that, yeah.
Uh, we had another great season at the pool, uh, every day we had compliments on the wonderful new shades, I loved them as well. Uh, we were able to stay open a week longer this year than normal with the help of my amazing staff, I really do have the best staff, they work hard all summer and they go the extra mile to make us a success. Uh, I've been busy back in the office getting ready for fall events and helping the Mowbridge Youth Organization get volunteers for their events, there's lots, and also helping lend an extra hand to make sure all the events are covered. Uh, this past week, I was invited to speak at the Mowbridge Public Middle School again this year, they are learning about community service, hospitality and tourism. So I enjoy getting to see the eighth graders as I use it as an opportunity to get my staff for next summer. Um, I also talk about the expectations that employers like me have in students looking for jobs coming up when they turn fourteen. Um, all my events can be found updated weekly on the Mowbridge Aquatic Center Facebook page, this is my best place to post as this page reaches everyone in our community and those surrounding us, and I think I just hit four thousand for the Mowbridge Aquatic Center Facebook page, so that's amazing. Um, also on my door, that's some stuff going on this, this month, um, we just had the MYO Jamboree, it brought a lot of out-of-town families into our community and they spent a lot of money, and it was a really busy day, so thank you to our football coaches and players for lending a hand when I asked, um, I know they got back late from a game that, um, last Friday, and they got up early and they were there all day to help me, so thank you to them. Uh, I also, lastly, I wanted to share that the Smithsonian Humanities Council reached out to me and they wanted to get us on the traveling Smithsonian art exhibit. Uh, it's an art collection that is focused on the Americas and the indigenous people's history, we would be sponsoring a venue here in Mowbridge for about a month and a half, so we're thinking maybe the Age Brown Library or the Sheerhow Arena, they will provide the art, the setup and all the advertising tools, they had one slot open, um, on their tour, right now they are in Chicago, and so I did confirm the spot. And we will host from March thirteenth to May first of twenty twenty-seven, so that's an amazing thing when it does get here in a couple of years, so I'm excited, and then there's a whole list of activities. Um, the stained glass diamond painting, I've never done that before, I'm super excited, we have a red, full registration, so that's, that's exciting. Um, middle school jamboree, it's in a lot of towns and a lot of buses, it, it will as families to spend money here again, um, the second annual color run is next Saturday, we had so much fun with this last year, the student council and the, um, NHS kids really helped me out and we raised about seven hundred dollars with that, last year we had smoke, and then this year we have smoke again, so I hope it goes away. Um, coffee break, um, it's the same as what I did last year, it was coffee table conversations just for elders and business people to come to the library and kind of just spit out ideas of, of events that we've had in the past, what we have in the future coming, what we can do, where I can get help, how I can, how can help stuff, people like that. Um, free family movie nights, I think that'll be really good coming up just because we don't have a movie theater until like November, I think, it's kinda on the quiet end, so I'm gonna spit out some movies at the library, and then preserving flowers workshop along with all the MYO I got going on, so. That's me in a nutshell, along with my pool. That's it, thanks.
All right, thank you.
You thought it was a good word.
Last item, uh, discussion, special council meeting, uh, September twenty-fifth at five thirty PM.
Does that work for everybody? We could do the eighteenth, I think is next Wednesday.
Would the twenty-fifth be the Wednesday afternoon?
Yeah, yep. So the eighteenth or twenty-fifth?
I can do either one with equal enthusiasm.
Excellent. Okay, perfect, we'll leave it at the twenty-fifth then.
Brent? Always the deciding factor.
First one who speaks up.
Okay, so mark your calendars, uh, public forum and visitors, is there anyone here who would like to address the council on anything that we have not talked about tonight? Okay, hearing none, I'll take us to payment of the bills, uh, bills were, um, extra whatever was laying here on your table before we sat down. So if there's no questions or comments on the bills, I'd look for a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Okay, and I guess if there's no other business before the council this evening, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Reiker?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.